Greenwood redevelopment commission is in order. Roll call please, Amanda.
Mr. Hoover.
Here.
Mr. Mullin.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Will let the record show at this time, Mr. Popper is absent as is non-voting advisor, Scott Alexander.
Amendments of the regular meeting of July 9, 2019, who have distributed the members of the commission. Is there a motion for approval of them as presented?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion, seeing that all payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll then move on to new business, Resolution 2019-11. The resolution approving an application for property tax deductions for certain real property located within the Warsville Real Economic Development Area. This is Future Way Logistics LLC. Good evening or good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dana Monta, Johnson County Development Corporation. I am here today to introduce you to Future Way Logistics, a new company that is coming to the state of Indiana and to the city of Greenwood. So we're very excited to have them. I've been working with Mr. Ahmi Dalawa, who is here today from the company, to give you an overview of the company and to answer any questions that you may have. They're looking to go in the Greenwood Park at 65 South area, Collins Road and Allen's Road right over nearby Pitney Bowes. Forty thousand square foot new construction facility that he will be purchasing. So, Mr. Dalawa, if you want to go ahead and talk about your company.
Thank you, good afternoon council members. My name is Ahmi Dalawa, and I'm representing the company called Future Way Logistics. And we are the division of IFS Logistics from Brampton, Ontario, Canada. And we started this company here in Indianapolis in 2015. But we haven't grown much since then, but now we are growing our operation in the US. And we have leased a better facility and taxes. And since the company was registered in Indiana, so we are planning to build over headquarters here. So we chose the site which is on I-65 and in the part of where all other companies are coming. So we are logistics company. And in Canada, we have a couple of like around maybe six hundred employees, including all office employees and drivers. But this company, we don't have that many employees here. And we are planning to grow here in the future. And so we provide all kinds of services, like warehousing, storage, logistics. And so forty thousand square foot building, we are planning to put here. It will accommodate around seventy-five office jobs and plus the other like other kind of jobs, including like custom payments, freight brokerage, and shops. The building will include office space plus warehouse and mechanical shop. And so like parking all the equipment on the in the property. So that's what our plan is. We provide all kinds of services like drive-in, LTL, third-party logistics. And this is the site we are having. It's, I believe, it's east of Pitney Bowes. It's a green area. So the building, this is the site plan, and that has around thirty-five thousand square foot of building with seventy-four hundred square feet of space and around five, six thousand square feet mechanical shop. And that includes fifteen, twenty thousand square foot warehouse and trailer parking on the back of the building. So we have done many buildings in the past. So we have a great experience in building new facilities. And this is the site plan, office layout, and warehouse layout of the building. So this is how the building is going to look from the front. This is the rendering of the building of architect prepared. So if you have any question, I'm willing to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
What do you ask before from the city?
So we are asking from the city is a five-year proper tax abatement. Which is in like first year is actually hundred percent. Then second year is eighty percent. Then followed with twenty percent reduction to every year. That's what we're looking at.
I noticed on the SB one that you listed number of additional employees at forty-five, but no salaries are listed.
Yes, because right now what are the office employees? We have another facilities. So our office employees are, if you look at our site plan, and it has, it does have, it might change a little bit, but it showing right now thirty-seven office employees plus the mechanical, it's just going to be around forty-five, I believe, in the beginning.
In average wage.
Average wage is going to be around four fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. It's based on the other employees, what are we paying for the employees.
Just a bit of advice, it would be helpful if that was, if salaries was filled in when it came before the council. I believe this will come before the council, so that would be helpful.
So.
This should be a simple addition, sir. Other questions? Comments from the commission?
Another standard question that we have relates to your timing. And in your SB one, you have estimated your start date being June 1, 2020.
Yes, because that's what we are projecting. It would take several months to draw the, do the engineering of the all the site plan. So we are planning to start June 21.
And your estimated completion date is March 31, 2022.
Yeah, usually this kind of project takes from twelve months to sixteen months. But some sometimes we can deliver the project faster than that.
Right. Based on some past experience, we have traditionally asked for a firm commitment of some type. It doesn't have to match up with these estimated dates. But is there any firm commitment dates of start and completion that you can provide?
The firm date, I believe we will want to start in, as next year, after the, as the spring starts, we are planning to start in May, no later than June the first.
Okay, and you're comfortable with making that a firm date?
Yes. June, June the first, I'm comfortable with a firm date.
Okay, and in your completion date, is there any?
Completion dates, I would like to keep it same, you know, like because it's, it's a big site. We might have to change the site plan, like we might be a bigger building. So I think it will take at least fifteen to eighteen months.
So did you say March 31, 2022?
That's in his SB one.
Yes.
Okay.
You're comfortable with that?
We are comfortable with that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Other questions?
There, just for the record, there was a notation of a typographical question about the parcel number. That will be corrected in the application before, if it does get accepted and moved on to council.
And on that clarification, the beacon aerial photograph and the parcel number shown there is the correct number?
Yes.
I, I don't know. I think it's correct number. Because this is the second time that we changed it. It is correct number, parcel number. I think this is the best number.
Members of the commission, we have Resolution 2019-11 before, as supposed to pleasure of the commission.
I'm going to motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, good luck.
May I ask, could Mr. Popper and Mr. Campbell's sponsors?
Next, we move on to Resolution 2019-12. The resolution approving an application for property tax deductions for certain real property located within the Eastside Economic Development Area. This is FedEx Supply Chain Inc.
Yes, yeah, Dana Monta, Johnson County Development Corporation. I'm here today with Leslie Wagner from Genovis. And representatives from FedEx Supply Chain. FedEx has been a great city partner for a number of years, and they are expanding in this location. This is for personal property abatement, so new equipment that will be bringing in nine new jobs. So we're very excited to see them taking this entire building and continuing to expand with their growth. So I'm going to let Leslie come over and explain the project to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. He was wonderful to work with, by the way. Leslie Wagner with Genovis. We are a national site location economic development advisory services firm. We're located here in the metro area. We do work with clients across the US. And we're very excited what we get to do, projects right here in our, in our home state. With me today, Jan Wolf, who heads up the human resources, HR, and Ed Ronseville, who is general manager, will serve as the general manager for this new facility. Who I've just mentioned. And then also, this project is supported by FedEx Supply in Memphis, Tennessee, which is where their corporate headquarters are. And Sam Adamson and Jim Heidi, both will have ongoing responsibilities, particularly on the compliance side of it. Because FedEx has, Supply Chain has been in the community, you likely know a bit about them. But FedEx Supply Chain is a third-party logistics provider. They have a lot of different clients and a lot of different verticals. FedEx several years ago purchased Gentco as a strategic really acquisition, just in making them a leader in the market. So this, this particular project, this is company background, which talks about, you know, reverse logistics and returns and recommersing and recycling. This particular project is in response to a new customer client, InterDesign. And InterDesign is a home goods, primarily of kitchen and bath products, I believe. They initiated in nineteen seventy-four, and they are based in Salon, Ohio. So this is in response to continued growth with InterDesign and the need to have an expert in operational efficiency and logistics fulfillment come to the table. Because quite frankly, their growth just exploded based on new customer accounts. A little bit more background for your knowledge about the other supply chain locations throughout the metro area. They do have operation on Commerce Parkway 700 in Greenwood. So they've got a location in Plainfield, a couple of in Indianapolis. So total regional employment for FedEx Supply Chain, not ground and not FedEx, out of the airport is about eleven hundred. And two hundred and fifty or so of those as of today are located in Greenwood. And this, as Dana mentioned, would add another ninety. So as mentioned, in response to home categories, industry, consumer requirement, this would be a lease of two hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. It is a new facility for FedEx. And all of the, so all of the investment would be new to the city of Greenwood, and all of the jobs would be new to the city of Greenwood. I mentioned, we work a lot, a lot of these projects generate out of the Memphis corporate office. So as our firm was asked to get involved, we worked and looked at multiple markets for deciding of this new location. And Louisville, Kentucky and Columbus, Ohio, in addition to Glen Johnson and Marion County were reviewed. Ultimately, this site was selected for a couple of reasons. One, FedEx Supply Chain has experience here. They know about the workforce, they know about the work ethic. So they felt comfortable placing, and then also the availability of an existing building, which in today's, you know, speed to market is everything. So the ability to have an existing building to occupy was very helpful. As Dana mentioned, the personal property investment is four point three to shy of four point four million in machinery and equipment. And it's traditional warehouse logistics type equipment that will be housed at this new building. Ninety new full-time permanent employees. Approximate average wage of sixteen twenty-nine per hour, which adds up three million estimated annual payroll. This does not include benefits. This does not include training that FedEx Supply provides to its employees. You may know a little bit about their commitment to bringing in people to their organization, continuing to train those people so that they can be promoted and retained and move on to higher positions. I will share that the, the seven hundred Commerce Parkway, we actually have tracked the number of people that have been brought in at entry level, and they have been escalated to higher positions. Last count was eleven people. So, you know, kudos to your commitment for that. Because they are familiar with the market, they're hiring, and we're really going to rely and continue to work with economic development resources in addition to relationships throughout the community that they already have. So key notes, this project does anticipate two shifts. Oftentimes, folks are interested in what type of positions are going to be hired. And we wanted to let you know, general manager and supervisor managers, HR, engineering, quality, inventory control, safety, shipping and receiving, in addition to general warehouse responsibilities and forklift operators. Did I miss anybody? FedEx has requested a five-year personal property tax abatement, traditional schedule, which would represent a hundred percent year one, decreasing by twenty percent annually for resulting savings of about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. One thing that's important to note too, is that the company also has pursued state-end tax credits, which are refundable tax credits, which is a great program that the state offers. And the state likes to have community support, that the community has some skin in the game. So by virtue of this tax abatement, it would help them leverage additional benefits from the state, which helps them invest sooner and hire sooner. And with that, we welcome any questions that you may have.
I'll ask just a clarifying question. When I look at the application and the schedule for the abatements, the schedule itself seems to indicate a ten-year each year declining, but you just mentioned a twenty percent decline.
Five-year.
Either standard or the twenty, that should reflect, we didn't, definitely didn't get those numbers changed at the top.
Okay, so twenty percent decline each year is what you are asking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have questions from Mr. Wagner? Or Dana? Or Jane or Ed?
I'll ask my standard question about the firm's start and completion dates. And you probably heard my description earlier. Are these dates such that you can commit to that as a firm date? September 3 seems a bit difficult to achieve. So I think that one might be something you might want to modify. So I would just ask, can you give us a date for those that you would consider to be firm?
September 4. So as you might imagine, there's a lot of pre-work that goes into this, this process. And, you know, we reach out far in advance. So firm on September 4, and believe all of the investment will be completed by that 12:31, I believe it said, 2020.
We're working about twenty hours a day around the clock right now, the facility current. Thank you.
Other question, comments?
Just one, on the presentation, you mentioned it'd be ninety jobs at a little over three million dollars. On your SB one, it says ninety jobs at just a little over two point seven.
You're right, and we'll be submitting an updated SB one. And the reason for that is, as I mentioned, we start very early in the process. And as we move throughout the process, information gets updated along the way. Project activity gets updated along the way. And those wages have been updated as well. And also the scope of jobs and all of that. Now we have definitive information versus what we think.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 2019-12, is that for consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move a second, further discussion?
Just a quick question, sir. So will we require the application to be re-corrected? So should that be part of the motion, or I'm just asking?
Let's do that. And then that way time gets to council. If it will, if it will be corrected.
So as long as that's part of that, with the understanding that that will be corrected in replacement, they do.
Thank you. Further questions? Move a second, no further questions, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Ms. Wagner, we appreciate the comments where you recognize what Dana does for our community. We echo that.
And gentlemen, Mr. Popper, Mr. Campbell, may I put down the sponsor again? Thank you.
Next on our agenda is request for financial incentive at 310 West Main Street.
There was a phone call, and now I'm wondering.
Kevin, are you here to speak with respect to Mr. Money's?
No, I'm not. He's here at the project's table till next meeting.
We'll do that.
Can reach out by email.
We'll move on to all business then, County Line Road, I-65 Development, the Cummins Project. First item is consideration of an engineering agreement with A&amp;F Engineering Company LLC.
Good afternoon.
Kevin, good afternoon.
Yes, so as part of the development of that County Line, it's I-65, it's been determined for various reasons, doing an update to the traffic study in this area to determine the size of infrastructure, the best design for traffic signals and intersections. The city engineer worked with A&amp;F as well as the outside engineering firm Strand in creating this. And so the traffic study is recommended at forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars payable from the Eastside tip. And I believe we already had the professional service agreement prepared.
Any questions? Questions from Mr. Steinments? Is there a motion to approve the PSA as presented?
Soon.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to Emerson Avenue, project reports.
So under item number one is the consideration of rebidding for phase two. We came to this board earlier in the year to ask to bid phase two, which is the non- roadway surface parts of Emerson Avenue project that we have bond proceeds for. That includes decorative lighting and upgrades to the traffic signals and sidewalk improvements. Put out the bid, we did not get any responses. Part of that was just bad luck, it was after one of the rainiest dunes in history. And now we've had one of the driest last two months in history. So the goal now is to come up with the exact same planes and specs, just with different dates. And we've gotten feedback from contractors as they plan to work for next year. We're starting to do that now. So we would put that back out for rebid. And hopefully award at the October meeting. We would get your authority to solicit bids, and then open them in September and ask for potential award or response of bidder at the October meeting.
Is there a motion to rebid phase two?
Soon.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye? Motion passes.
So turning back the clock a little bit to phase one, we got the final quantities reconciliation. During that project, we were lucky enough to have in-house folks out there reviewing quantities as well as our architect. And you can see that there are several that went there in the attached spreadsheet that were higher, some of them lower. Anytime you're doing a road that big, you're going to have slight deviations on the actual amount of aggregate that's milled and what's needed to replace and undercuts that you have to do additional, additional asphalt resurfacing on. And so the aggregate change on that was sixty-six thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, which is pretty reasonable for a one point six million dollar contract. And upon approval of change order number two, we'll then move into the certificate of substantial completion.
What's the commission's pleasure with respect to change order two?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And lastly, we move to the certificate of substantial completion. There were some items, the reason that this is somewhat delayed on this project and all projects is you're always going back out and doing re-inspections, making sure everything's there. They came in and fixed a few things that our architect found. And that was signed by our architect earlier this summer and recommended for us to approve for memorialization of that at this meeting. So asked to approve the certificate of substantial completion for Emerson Avenue, phase one, by milestone construction, or milestone contractors, sorry.
Further the commission?
Soon.
Further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now let's move on to Main Street, Kevin.
Back again. So this refers to the property of 1 East Main and 21 East Main Street. It is the southeast corner of Main and Meridian. In discussing with staff, we would like to have authority to re-offer this to the private sector there to develop a commercial parcel on Southeast corner. The praised price was thirty-five thousand dollars. And so each perspective in the buyer will have to offer at least that. And the required uses on that will be for commercial or mixed-use development, emphasis on retail and food service at the, at the corner there. And we plan to keep this open for the month and then review them and look to see what options we have at the September meeting for disposition of this parcel and getting it back from the tax.
What's that currently zone?
It is owned commercial. And if you look at the second page of the, I think it has it here. Oh, it's not in there. But it actually went through the common council, it was reasonably commercial. It has some commitments as far as makes an area not really limiting on use except for a common, a common kind of prohibited uses that the council has considered before.
So those are still applying to?
Yes, those commitments are applied to the parcel by council to the redevelopment commission, who's the owner, if that makes sense. But it has commercial zoning with commitments. But it does allow for your general commercial and like retail type use that would be appropriate in that area.
All right, cool.
Is there a motion to authorize the offering sheet as Kevin had described?
Soon.
I'll second. Further discussion? Seeing that all payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Old City Park.
So first one we have at Old City Park is... First of all, the progress of Old City Park has moved very well. The former maintenance building that's sat there since nineteen seventy has been removed. A lot of great work being done, we're working up at the park and a lot on Main Street today. If you remember, we did the playground equipment separate. We've already done the cube tower, this is another bucket of that playground equipment. By doing it separate, you avoid the contractor's markup. So the proposed RDC request dating straight from legal apartments contract is twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty dollars from the project funds earmarked for Old City Park for the playground developed by... from the project funds earmarked for Old City Park for the playground developed by a factory called Gork. This brings you back to the area we're talking about, we've already ordered the cube tower. I should note that Rob Taggart took to the Parks Board, it's not pictured on here, it's on the other side of the park, ordered the fitness equipment from the Park Board at their last meeting, so Parks kicked in some capital on that. And the elements that are coming from Gork include the waterfall, which is kind of a modern slide and play, playing element. You can't quite see it on this picture, but it's actually up on the hill sliding down towards kind of where that climbing that is, I believe. And then you've got the dancers, which is a balancing element for kids. That's shown, I believe, over by the orange pyramidal looking thing on the smaller kids' island there. And then you've got all of these various balance balls, which are at Tarkington Park that allow kids to kind of have unstructured, but productive play. They're over there on the far left, that is an area that is suspect for little kids as they normally aren't as interested perhaps in, in the large slides. And so to review the ask again would be for the commission to approve spending from their previous financial commitment, twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty dollars, and entering into a contract for purchase and delivery of playground equipment with Gork.
Kevin, does that include the installation?
It includes, so how we did it is it includes the freight and shipping. The installation was included in the general contract for the general contractor, but the materials weren't, because you paid the same markup on the materials. So the installation is included, but we carved out the materials because there was so much independently, solely sourced equipment that it didn't make sense to include it in there. It's different when you're looking at a commodity like asphalt or wood product or something that, that, that the GC has a relationship with the sub. In this case, you know what the price is, you know what discounts you can get for buying early or joining a collaborative purchase agreement. And when you're buying this much, you can render some savings as long as you have someone like me and an awesome attorney like Kelsey Thret up all day bringing it to make you happy.
Many staff and friends are getting good compliments today.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Further discussion? Singing down, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did you say what part of that was?
It's out of, they've already appropriated, the money was included in the Old City Park request. It was split between the east and central. But this is approved in the contract for that.
Buy some trees?
Yeah, so another situation that follows similar logic in other projects, putting some real estate, Emerson and projects that we've seen throughout the metro region, had a lot of trouble sourcing trees. In Old City Park, we have enough trees that it could qualify as an arboretum afterwards. And we have several large caliber trees. So rather again than pay a contractor's markup on the pyramid of raw materials, we went directly to a tree broker, which is a thing that exists, I did not know that, I'm learning one. And we are going to go tromp around, myself, our architect, and hopefully people in Parks Department, they deserve it, in Ohio, in Kentucky, in Indiana, and source us some trees this, this late this fall to be delivered to the site next year. So this would be taken and then to a contract with, I believe it is Listerman Services, I don't think it's that name, with David Listerman Associates as a tree broker, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. And we're going to go pick out some trees. So expect bills again in the future for actual plant material. Tree material. And it's a similar situation that Mr. Hooper made it out before. Then the contractor has installation, but we're not paying the markup on the actual plant material.
Make a motion to send Kevin out of state.
Yeah, Kevin, you're saying.
If you can imagine areas where they have six-inch caliber trees in Kentucky, you can imagine how, how well populated the areas are.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll say, what tip, I just said, I missed that.
Is it also split?
It's still split, it's still on the front.
Uh, no, this is, it will come out of that same, which is say that the central part of it.
Further discussion? Singing down, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that was a not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
And Amanda, the proposed contract is set for the mayor's signature, but maybe it should be mine?
Uh, yes.
So I'll mark that out?
Yeah, we'll just cross that out if you don't mind, you and Mr. Harris, when you decide. Sorry, we missed that.
There's not a spot for the secretary?
I'll make one. He'll just have to wait back at the end of the meeting. I didn't hear that he had a second meeting to go to, so we should be fine.
Now we're going to move on to Presidential Block, Main Street.
So we've got two presentations on, on this one, the block that we have named the Presidential Block. As such, I've done a lot of reading on William McKinley. McKinley, Washington, and Main Street is this block out by the alley in the north. Pearl Street is further north, but there's a row of residential houses that we're not really concerned with in this redevelopment project. So what we have before is the last properties of the so-called Presidential Block. We have been in quite a long discussion with Mr. Buck, who owns what is colloquially, colloquially known as Smitty's Transmission. Whether or not there's four parcels there, two that are the actual commercial business, the other of which is a very small rental, and there's a double that actually fronts on McKinley Street. There is 178 East Main, it actually stands, I was not here then, but it actually stands just behind where Babbitt's Bake Shop stood historically. And is next to the rail property, Jester Property, the Jester Properties, we've acquired the rail property. We have a signed purchase agreement that are yet to close. This is the other rental, 102 East Main. This sits on McKinley Main, and as you can tell, it's very hard for the laborers or anyone perhaps to see the boundaries between the rentals and the commercial business. And there is the Transmission Shop that is operated by Mr. Buck, he's the second operator, but it retained the same name as Smitty's. There is an aerial view of the block, McKinley is on the left, or the west side of that. You'll see there is the residential double with a garage back upon the alley. You then have a vacant lot that was purchased by the prior owner of Smitty's to store vehicles. You then have the actual Transmission Shop moving forward to east, where you see its original footprint is that small building up the front that then got added onto it, a three-bay situation that heads back towards the alley. Those two outbuildings are actually north of the alley and belong to the residence, that's not, not within this purchase. You can then see the multi-edition, single-family rental that sits on the far east side of the Buck properties. You then have the rail property, which is kind of more interesting, tan brick one. And then you have the two Jester property, four of those Jester properties that are owned by the redevelopment commission that kind of encompass that on the Washington street side. So we own those two, the two bigger ones. We have a signed purchase agreement on the single-story brick one that used to be a pharmacy. And then we have very productive conversations so far based off the appraisals of the other four parcels on the block. Remember that this is the first reading, so we won't need full action on this, just the ability to make an offer. We'll have to go to a second reading for this, we'll come back to you in September since it is, since it is over a hundred thousand dollars. And I fully expect there to be some negotiation on this, particularly this, this is a commercial business. And so we will come back to you where we stand on that.
Kevin, at these three locations, are we getting pushback at this point with respect to that?
Pushback from?
From the owners?
It's all one owner, the three properties, it's all one owner.
Okay, so is there, specifically with the business property on?
He owns the business, he is, I think what will be revealed in conversation is that there will probably be some negotiating on the either business interruption or business relocation potentially. I don't want to speak for them, but this is the first commercial one we've thought of this area for a while. And there's always some, some back and forth, particularly if you have a growing concern in there. But however, I wouldn't be bringing this to you if I didn't have a certain degree of confidence in our ability to reach what I think will be an acceptable compromise that meets our redevelopment goals and we use the owner fairly positioned.
Kevin, I'm confused, which is not unusual, but are you asking, are you contemplating making an offer? Which would require us waiving second reading or considering second reading?
It's, we've contemplated, I know that the offer will not be accepted as the average of the two appraisals, but understand that we can come to you with an executable offer at the September meeting. And so how that interplays with the two-meeting rule has been something we've tried to figure out recently. My goal was to follow spirit that and not make something that could be executed until September. But if it's more prudent to waive that because we need to have a offer that is then rejected. And in fact, we could even waive the two-meeting rule with the condition that no purchase agreement be executed absent another vote in September. That is fine too. So whatever we need to do to make folks feel most comfortable with procedure as well as the intent of the internal rule. I don't think the intent of the rule was to make it so that to buy a property, it would essentially take three meetings if it was over a hundred thousand dollars.
You have to have approval from us to make the offer, the initial offer, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And so what do you, if we don't waive the rule, he really can't make an offer, he can just have some?
Yeah, it's hard to make an offer if we haven't approved the amount.
That he might bring back to us and tell us those.
And so the problem has arisen, which we know that the average itself will always be negotiated on, that you need to have two readings to get to the final one. And so as I said, I think what we've done, or a way to get through it, would be to approve the author, the offer at the appraisal price, but that it can't be executed minus additional presentation in September. So that would make you all feel comfortable that I, that I, we couldn't, the staff couldn't just take the offer, say the gentleman approved the average of the appraisal, which is extremely unlikely, and then have an executed agreement and close in interim. However, the understanding, and it is not an intent, would we execute an offer without going back before the September meeting? But I understand the need to form the gymnastics to get to comply with the stone rule.
That sounds reasonable to me. We suspend the rules, but condition on the final offer has to be approved at a separate meeting? Is that?
So is that a motion to?
It's a motion to.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And just so you know, it'd have to be four members who vote affirmatively on that to waive that rule. All pay or motion, say aye?
Aye.
We had a sufficient, so now we are, we'd be open for consideration of directing Kevin to make it on.
I'm motioning.
And that's at four-twenty-five, right?
Yeah.
I'll second that, further discussion? And it's clear that in the waiver motion that it's, that as Kevin has suggested he will do, is that will come back for us for final approvals to whatever the negotiated price might be.
Yeah, if the negotiated price, yeah. And if he provides a source to us.
Further discussion? Singing down, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now move on to 198 East Main Street.
So we stay on the same block. And we go to a new presentation. 198 East Main Street was mentioned in the previous discussion. The request would be to fund the demolition of this building. This was discussed at a prior RDC meeting. In fact, I'm just going to give you the aerial again, if there's anything on this, and we'll go back to that, because I think it'd be more prudent. We're discussing the building on the far right, the right bottom corner of the screen. It's two-story, acquired from Mr. Jester earlier this year with pretty much no setback on Washington and Main. The request, if you remember, this was included, it was briefly discussed. It's for demolition services, twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, standing demolition. We told this board that, oh, sorry, I skipped ahead, I apologize. Item number two is actually the consideration of ratification contract, this contract for services with Cooler Design. And that's what I asked for first. And that is that Cooler Design actually employs Harry Cooler, who is the son of the architect who signed actually the Mills House on Fry Road. He wanted to get back involved in Greenwood, offered us a very nominal cost to do the inspection or to kind of think about ideas for this block and did a viability inspection of this property and a field survey. And so I guess I was first to ask for ratification of the contract for services with Mr. Cooler's firm to do a viability analysis of this property owned by the RDC, of which you all are in receipt of through SharePoint. Now you payable consensual stuff.
And that's at thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Pledge of the commission?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Singing down, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we go to the three where I jumped ahead, and that'd be consideration of contract for demolition of 198 East Main, also payable from the central tip. So you are all in receipt of the Cooler Design, just creating, by the way, for the project, or for the building at the corner. Kind of goes through a variety of elements of the building, included some pertinent highlights in the slideshow, you all have more extensive information. You can see here where we actually used city personnel to remove part of Mansmore Grove that marched. that marched along the building. I understand it's seventies, these were added, and it's a way to reduce energy costs. However, if they weren't installed correctly, you ended up with major water damage behind them. This one unfortunately was also installed right where the building moved from wood to brick, which further its deterioration. And so when we pulled off the Mansford roof, unlike say the planetary taproom that was protected by and in great shape, was an old masonry building, it had it backed only further to funnel water from a downspout that had a really interesting kind of like mousetrap configuration where the water was supposed to somehow fall from that PVC pipe into the next one, to treat it. And anyway, that didn't work. And obviously you can see what it did to the corner of that building. You go over to the west wall, this is in an alley between it and the one-story building. See the theme again of what we call improvised drainage. And due to a failure of drainage between the buildings, this building, which sat slightly lower, ended up taking all the water and you can see where it severely undermined the west wall. What you can't see on here is they actually did a wooden staircase to enter the second floor because it was a separate residence, that only furthered the way water was held in there and, and, and furthered the inability of the alley to shed moisture. So we go to kind of the summation of the document. And it kind of goes through, you have windows, masonry roof, structural members, framing, finished materials, et cetera, that would require substantial repair or replacement. It becomes not very effective cost benefit analysis. And it is a recommendation to demolish the building and start a day with great outdoor space that you enjoy. And so based on someone who took a personal interest in Greenwood, maybe there's a connection here, is very interested in architecture and did a thorough survey on it. And internal stash review as well as the contractors who looked at this for demolition, it's our strong recommendation to approve the contract with any demolition and fund the removal of this building.
Given your strong recommendation, is there a motion to approve that?
It's a motion, second.
Further discussion? Singing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the source of funding on this?
Central Tiff.
Thank you.
All right, on to?
Madison Avenue.
Uh, yeah. All right, Madison Avenue. First one on Madison Avenue is consideration of change order six. This is the last change order on Madison Avenue of Pearl and Noble. Small increase of six thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. As you could see, we were under, when we came into that, seventeen thousand. So we're still under about eleven thousand for the original contract. I plan to work with Greg and Adam here soon and release back. We came under on Madison, Emerson, and Serena. Don't hold me to that ever again. And we need to release those project commitments back to the general, what we call it, fund balances up there respectively. But I've just been waiting for substantial completions and architectural inspections. So I ask that you approve change order number six for six thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents to Madison Pearl and Noble.
So?
Second.
Further discussion? Singing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That was paid, by the way, from the Fry Road Tiff, just in case you have a record. The next number, which is Madison Noble Street to Fry Road, we're going to have to find a better name, I hope, for determination. After review by the deputy mayor, the mayor and staff, it was deemed most appropriate to not stop at Fry Road, to stop this at the private drive of Simon's property where Papa John's used to be, I now believe it's a cafe, because it's a non-profit, any kind of cool story. And so we included the survey, since we already had field, to go in and take in that additional stretch of road. And that is an amendment to the professional service contract of seven thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for the additional survey of that, which is the first step in expanding that project's line of scope. And that's payable from the Fry Road Tiff. So I ask for a motion to approve that change to the professional service contract.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Further discussion? Singing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So item F, 523 South Madison Avenue. So? 523 South Madison Avenue is the address of what was the former Greenwood Middle School, something that this commission has worked on since 2016. We have worked on requests, on creating a packet to guide requests for development proposals as we try to put some of these twenty acres back on the tackles. And that's what I have to present to you today. This is, you know, it goes through it, I'll walk it through it at a pace that I think we'll need the table content. We'll start with some background, you can see the new rendering of it there. We'll get to a better one soon, it shows the preservation of the field house and some ideas for Madison. 523 South Madison Site, middle slash high school constructed in the middle of the last century. The gym, which we preserved in the nineties, we entered into this board, the redevelopment commission, entered into a collaborative project with the Greenwood School Corporation. Purchased the building for a million dollars in 2017. Demolition began and was completed in 2012, actually began in eighteen, but was completed in 2019. The site is actually nineteen point nine acres, but as you all know, there's the site and there's the yield. And so it yields about fifteen acres of developer property. Circled by some utility units, you've got setbacks from roads, you've got to retain room for other roads and utilities. So that's roughly what we think it will yield. You can see how central this is, to not only the Central Tiff, but the whole kind of north-central, we'll call it part of the city, as it sits in the middle. Perhaps ironic to folks who built this when it was built on the southern edge of the city limits. The goal was to further kind of all the things we talked about when we created the Central Tiff. Adam and Greg have some updates on how that's performing, and we think quite well later on today. We want to capitalize on our recent investments. We want to find a neat mixed-use product that really doesn't exist outside of maybe Fountain Square, a little bit of Nervington, which you don't count as outside of downtown Indianapolis, Nervington. We want to find more retail and restaurant opportunities. We want to maximize connectivity. We want to catapult and leverage public investments. And we want to respect the context of Old Town. And it's difficult, with a site this big, you go from Dunkin' Donuts all the way up to a public library, and two church sanctuaries, a residential neighborhood. So you've got, you've got a lot going on. Recent and ongoing projects, which this board has spearheaded and done, listed here. Perhaps the first time all listed out. You've got the Serena Square, an amphitheater project, they've been rocking that all, all summer. You've got Maiden Meridian with the slip lane, potential development, which we just approved today, commercial infill. Madison Avenue, Smith Valley roundabout, which started off with the common council, moved over to the redevelopment commission. The North Madison Avenue Streetscape that we just talked about, the Serena Way connection. They've permanent parking west of the Greenwood Library. Entered into one of what I think is the better deals the city perhaps will make in quite some time. And that was the parking deal that we formed with Our Lady of the Greenwood Church parking lot that actually had its roots in council discussions when we took, created the Central Tiff from the downtown development plan. We built that. We are underway on the old city park renovation. We have been repaving alleys, we are designing one that Mr. Money will hopefully come talk to us about soon. And we have the streetscape projects under design. And then we have that scheduled hopefully for construction next year. So as a development summary, this looks somewhat similar to what you've seen on the website. The application that we developed when this was more of an abstract plan, this delves deeper into it. You can see that the north end of the middle school site, we focus heavily upon the field house, which you may have seen, apartment proof, vital schematic design for. It serves as part of the recreation and green spine that runs north-south through this parcel and Old City Park and east-west along Pleasant Run Creek. We would be looking potentially at a mixed-use building that focuses heavily on market rate apartments and a parking garage that would serve both those apartments and the field house in building A and buildings C and D on the east side. Now you're up against the sanctuary of Our Lady of the Greenwood and the shattered parking lot. The record is on the, on the northeast there. You would be looking at residential buildings. Could be horizontal property regimes, could be apartments. We'll look to the private sector to help guide us on that. Building B, you have again the opportunity for more residential massing and potentially some commercial on the first floor, but largely posited towards residential massing. Living in this kind of recreation core with Old City Park up at the top. Notice you also have Home Avenue that comes over, you have the sanctuaries of the church. So it lends itself to, you know, a less intense commercial footprint and more of a living environment. We also include in here the mid-block, tentatively named the new road to be constructed. Church Street, as it moves from what is currently occupied by the vineyard, over to what was the historical sanctuary, the original sanctuary of Our Lady of the Greenwood. And then you see the potential for Orchard Lane to be expanded and terminated essentially in the middle of where Our Lady of the Greenwood Elementary School is. E would be a single-family situation, whether those are connected or have kind of narrow setbacks between them, much like Karen Morton or something. It's something we are flexible with. We outlined the parcels and their size. Now you see the actual massing model is updated for the first time since the app that came out when we first started thinking about this conceptually. Really, the main change is how the field house fits in there with its northern addition. We also figured out a way for traffic to move through there. You can see off Madison Avenue, a way to circumnavigate the northern part. I guess not circumnavigate, but to access the northern block. It has a circle there that reaches both the field house, the main residential development, and then exits back out onto Madison Avenue. And you can see areas for commercial. One thing focused upon, or one thing to point out is that this setup concentrates heavily on the northern two blocks, but we allow for private sector folks who want to take a look at the whole fifteen acres to submit on the bottom, which is a much more commercial zone, the southern block as well. This, if you look at A, in that inset, the black and white inset, shows you essentially what we'd be looking for on that drive that would allow circulation, circulation between the field house and the mixed-use building to the north and west. Come through with a character image on B. And I think this is, it could be difficult to see, but it's informative. We imagine another green space that sits out, an activity node, north of the field house. So you'll have this kind of expanse of green that offers the opportunity for a plaza and has in front of the field house, as well as the potential for retail or commercial on the first level of the east side of the large building on the northeast with green space in between it. As you know, we spent a lot of time on this, so we responded to developer requests, we went into parking. And we dug into how potentially the parking could be split within the garage. We built in some surface parking that's essential for folks who have drop-offs at the field house, dropping a kid off for practice or event, as well as at the various buildings. We also show, which is in the master plans, adding on street parking of Meridian and Madison. This board also took the diligence, as you know, everything now has to include stormwater plants, unlike the middle school before, which was pretty much paid to the entire thing, absent the football field. We found areas that were cohesive to detention work with Chris Jones and the Stormwater Utility, back into some approximate cost, found areas where underground or like say up in the northeast, you could use a bio-sway or a rain guard that could be used to retain in the northern two zones. Then moved over into the planning side of things. This will be used to help us develop a PUD that we presented to council eventually. Set limits on building heights. We set ground floor finishes. We came in and worked on setbacks and decided what we need. As you know, when you're doing a mixed-use development, you can't really follow a subdivision controlled by ordinance. We spent a lot of time on four. There's been concern and with just reason for some of the massive amount of apartment complexes you see built in downtown Indy and other areas perhaps that have a very homogeneous facade. We took steps to try to lead to variation in the. We also mandated a significant amount of transparency. You can see an example in downtown Indy where we think they got it right below. If you've been to Rock, there. Mandating a certain amount of glass. You can also see, went through materials. Again, looking at things like limiting the architectural metal panels that have become too far. And what we really try to do is focus on areas like the top, focus on development, like the top one there, and not the bottom one, or some close to Washington Street in Indianapolis, where expediency seemed to be traded in for quality. We moved through landscape guidelines and provide examples, site furniture materials made, which you recognize, four of which are actually, or yeah, four of which are in agreement. Actually five, that should be in agreement. So to zoom out a little bit, what we do is put forth this package to the public, developers, after this meeting, approved. We would have more written guidance come out subsequent. Uh, we would have more, um, written guidance come out subsequently to that that expands upon these themes. But in developer speak and as well as the hundred-plus, uh, pages of stormwater, uh, studies, uh, all to surveys, et cetera, as we got feedback from developers. The plan would be to keep this open for four months, 120 days. Um, and then come to the redevelopment commission, um, uh, and go through some of the options that have been vetted. And then, uh, hopefully be able to, uh, to make some moves, um, towards the end of the year, so start it next year as far as, uh, development agreements. So if there are any questions, you can answer that now. If there's not, ask for a motion to, um, have staff, um, issue this, this presentation. And solicit, uh, ideas from developers and investors, bring those back to you, uh, from the holidays of this year and let this board see what the market, um, has proposed.
Who would be presenting this proposal? Can you send it out?
It would be my recommendation, if you're, uh, that's correct, when we did the pull, uh, presenting the proposal to private sector or to the redevelopment project sector. To the private sector, it would be myself and other staff members of the city. We posted, uh, in the document, city on the city website, but also over the last year and a half, between the mayor, myself, the deputy mayor, uh, other staff members and, um, and CBS, I think we're something up to above 20 different parties on the development side alone, not including the investor side who are very shout to us. We would email them, actually got three or four requests today, uh, for it, because it's on the agenda. And so anyone who has requested it slash we've met with, uh, we would try to get it to. Um, but we also would, um, have it on the website and available, um, from folks who see the news release or, uh, see it on the website or are intrigued. It's, it's one of the larger parcels, especially from downtown Indy, from the entire metro. And so we think it already has in its conceptual form generated a significant amount of interest. And so now that it nears reality, we think it will continue to drive, to drive, uh, propositions.
Is there a motion to direct staff to move forward? Further discussion? Seeing now, on FRCI.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, two more and then you don't have to hear from me for another moment. The next is something that, uh, we know will be asked for as we move along for this, especially if you're starting to erring down, folks, um, who have shown an interest, and that is the real estate market analysis, um, and for the middle school site, uh, particularly looking at what commercial retail uses would be there. Uh, and we wanted to make sure because if you did this in 2016 or 2017, everyone's going to tell us that it's old, uh, data and ask for it again. So we wanted to have it out at the same time the RFP went out, so we could provide the most current, uh, commercial profile. We did a lot of diligence, um, AECOM, if you look, uh, had a lot of contemporary, um, work in the Indianapolis, uh, area, including a former coke plant, the, uh, uh, Monument Circle, the, I believe also on here, which is not in there, is the GM Seppen plant, uh, in the Chrysler Foundry, uh, and also the Ford site. So they're familiar with large, um, reuse projects in Indianapolis metro, and that's why we elected to go with them. And so I asked to approve, uh, $33,000, um, from the Central Tiff, um, to provide us with the market analysis that we know, in fact, every developer has asked for as far as trade area, demographics, generalized real estate fundamentals, et cetera.
I'm making motions to approve the PSA with the ECOM.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last is ratification of the asbestos inspection, uh, abatement at, uh, Cool City. Payable for the prior R T F, $1,797. Uh, here my prior, Cool City is gone, the middle house, Mr. Anthony continues to invest in it, it looks, uh, phenomenal. So I'd ask you to ratify $1,797 payable to IGEAS for asbestos abatement at, um, the former site.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Kelsey.
Hello, sirs. I just have one thing for your consideration today. I'm talking about the property that the RDC owns at 1265 North Madison Avenue. The RDC acquired that property in November of 2017. Uh, we got an environmental restrictive covenant, uh, that was recorded on September 2018. We were notified by IDEN that that recording was missing one of the exhibits. So that was provided to us. It's a comfort letter from IDEN, basically going through, uh, what has been done, what they found at that site. And so they're asking for us to sign a scriptener's error affidavit and then re-record that, uh, environmental restrictive covenant for that property. So today, the ask of the RDC is for, uh, for you to authorize the re-recording of that environmental restrictive covenant with all the exhibits as required, uh, and then to authorize the RDC to sign that scriptener's error affidavit.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, you need to be in your office.
I think today.
Thank you. Mr. Wright. Mr. Johnson, I fear you're not going to be in the same vein.
But I'm sure he's going to be quick about it.
Yes. If you must, I'll be. How does that with the worst hill road?
Yes, uh, so I do have a number of items for you for your consideration. The first is the Orstil Road. Uh, this is a consideration of a, uh, design supplement specifically for, uh, design supplement number three. Uh, this is for the Orstil Road, section three and section two project or consultant, uh, United Consulting, actually Chris Hammond, representative is here if you had any specific questions. So I presented this, uh, as for the first meeting back in June, I believe it was, I kind of gave a rundown of the history of, of the project from the original design to the, uh, first and second supplements, uh, as the scope of the project, the scope of the design increase. And which for then brings to, uh, our current, uh, proposed supplement number three. Uh, this would be an increase of an additional, uh, 497,782 dollars. And over on the right there is, is the cumulative, the total of the design, of the, uh, the new design contract amount. So some of the, uh, a couple of items that, uh, four that were involved in this, uh, additional survey services, environmental document. We had, uh, some extensive work done on some public meetings, uh, for the environmental document, some additional driveway services. And then on the design side, which was a, a pretty big chunk of this ask, uh, for bridge design and hydraulic calculations associated with the, the bridge, it's going to be over a crease ditch. And then there were some other additional design tasks, uh, one being a couple of detention ponds, one in the section three project and one also in the, section two projects, some additional design as well with the driveways. Then actually there was some, uh, credit or a reduction, uh, of costs associated with the design. One of the, one of the sub consultants was able to, uh, make some cost savings on their roundabout design, lighting and utility coordination tasks. Uh, so, uh, my request to you is to approve this design supplement, uh, number three for, for this project. And actually that should read Orstil Road, section three and section two, our project.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And then as I've done over the last few months, just providing you an update on the various relocation costs the city has paid to the residents of the local home parks that have been affected by the project. So, uh, since the last, or since the July RDC meeting, there's been an additional 50,379 dollars and 77 cents. So there's a cumulative amount of, uh, 451,396 dollars and 15 cents. Uh, I did ask, uh, for an update from our consultant, uh, how many more we anticipate coming in, I think we're nearing, we're probably, down to about 10 to 15 remaining of these different vouchers. Uh, some of the, uh, triggers for those are, are when the residents find their new residence, uh, that then the, our, the sub consultants go and confirm that they found it. Uh, and then we're able to process the paperwork for any final payments. Um, my next item, moving on to, uh, Orstil Road, section two. This is, uh, this design supplement, a little bit of history on this. Uh, this is specifically for the intersection of Honey Creek and Stones Crossing Road. It was originally its own design project as a, as a roundabout, uh, as the Orstil Road corridor project that United Consulting is working on or leading. Uh, as those, as that project came, came around, uh, the decision was made to actually combine the two. So that roundabout project was kind of merged into the corridor project, but the consultant is, uh, Crossroad Engineers, they are still leading the design on that roundabout. So, uh, as part of, a part of this process, the coordination between United and Crossroads, uh, Crossroads does have some additional tasks. They are actually requesting an increase as well. And so what I've lined out here is just for the crossroad specific, uh, the life of that particular design contract. So right now, uh, the proposed supplemental number three for Crossroads is an increase of $11,000. This is going to be, uh, associated with detention design there at the intersection of Honey Creek and Stones Crossing, uh, additional developments and plans. The coordination between United and Crossroads has been, uh, very good here, certainly, uh, a portion of the Orstil Road, section two project, the flows will actually convey toward that intersection. So, uh, Crossroads is going to design to incorporate those runoff flows into their, into their design. So my request, uh, for you is to approve this design supplement number three, uh, for Orstil Road, section two, and authorize city staff to prepare the amendment documents.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Uh, and then, uh, of my last two items, actually, uh, I've got a flip-flop, I apologize, uh, from the agenda, so. Get up Orstil Road for the consideration of change orders, um, for the documentation, that should actually read from the contractor, uh, not from, uh, NDOT there. NDOT, uh, is not, uh, participating in this project financially, so, uh, these are, uh, four change orders that we received from the, uh, the contractor, uh, as they've been progressing. They are soon to complete their phase one, uh, the segment of, uh, Orstil Road between Collins Road and 300 East closed for like the last, uh, three months. Uh, I hope that in the next week, week and a half, they'll be able to make that, uh, change to their next construction phase, uh, and actually open up that one thing. But in the process, in the process of doing that, there's a number of items, uh, one for the asphalt, asphalt surface mix. Uh, that's just clarifying, uh, the type of mix that we as a city want to ensure that the product, uh, is, uh, the surface is a long-lasting product. There was a field office, uh, change order as well, that included a change order onsite, uh, for the contractor. The, uh, there was a concrete pavement below the intersection of Orstil Road and, uh, 300 East that was not anticipated, so there's additional removal cost there. And then, uh, since this is, since a major component of this project is relocating an existing sanitary, uh, force main, uh, two force mains, excuse me. Um, there was some, uh, uh, reconstruction involved with those, uh, manholes associated with that, so. My request is, is to you is to ratify the approval of these change orders, numbers two through five, and authorize city staff to sign the change order documents and continue with the process.
So move. Second.
Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Thank you. And then my last item. Uh, similar, uh, additional, these are additional change orders associated with the Smith Valley Road, Massett Roundabout. Uh, all of these items, the, the work is complete, but all of these items is just following up with the paperwork through the contractor and the NDOT processes. I'll try to quickly rattle, rattle these off. Number nine was a time extension, uh, for the northwest corner. We added in during the project some improvements for a pedestrian crossing there that were not in the original plan. Uh, we thought that was going to be beneficial to, uh, the general public to have a crossing there with, uh, pedestrian signals. Uh, number 10 was just a time extension, no cost involved. I think it actually extended the contract duration by one day, relocate that hydrant. Number 12 is actually, uh, after the opening there on Meridian Street, intersection with Smith Valley Road, Channelization Island. There were a number of vehicles that were actually hitting the island, uh, in spite of proper pavement markings that there is to the drivers. Uh, so we actually removed the island and had it reconstructed with a, a little more of a sloping roll curve to try to, if, if future vehicles were going to hit it, to at least minimize the damage.
Is it going to be painted?
Pardon?
Is it going to be painted?
Uh, it is to some degree, uh, already.
I noticed the yellow, the yellow paint on it.
Um, the, uh, number 18 was just an addition of a pipe, uh, PVC conduit for some signals. 19, we relocated a pedestrian pole in southwest corner and just slightly, the existing buttons just slightly exceeded the acceptable, uh, criteria from the edge of sidewalk for ADA requirements. Uh, number 20, uh, when we added the LED, LED signboards to the yield sign, the vehicles approaching from 31 enter into the roundabout. We have the flashing LEDs that, uh, lights to get their attention. Uh, number 21, that was a, uh, extending, uh, pipes to the, to a, to one of the hydrants. Typically, NDOT does not participate in, uh, utility work, so that was on the city. As a result of various comments from the public and also the common council, number 22, we added in some miscellaneous pavement markings there at the intersection. That's the no left turn, uh, word, warnings that are now on the pavement as well as the, uh, I guess the striking, the pavement markings across the intersection, just to make it clear to drivers of that, uh, lane shift across the intersection of 31. And then, uh, number 23, there was a sanitary manhole that needed some reconstruction, uh, during the, during the project. The subtotal of all those, uh, $62,172.24, so my request to you is to ratify the approval of those change orders, nine, 12, 18 through 23, and to authorize city staff to sign, uh, NDOT's documents and continue the process.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing now on FRCI.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Stone.
Good evening, Stone.
Good evening. All right, hi, good evening. I will agree, but to have a quick, uh, update for you with regards to, one is a recording, recording matter, and the second is discuss the current notice valuations per TIP. So the first, just as a general update, uh, by August 1st of each year, uh, there's new, new requirements whereby the local redevelopment commission has to work with the county auditor's office on the annual TIP neutralization process. Uh, we, we've done that over the last three or four weeks, uh, city engineer, project manager, controller and I have put, went through parcel by parcel and adjusted the base incremental values for any of the many demolitions that are taking place, new construction, abeyments, any estimated appeals, et cetera. Uh, the, was, the result of all that work was shared with you electronically in preparation for these meeting. Um, but it's. But it's important work because it ultimately leads to the certification of both the uh tax district base nows, net assess valuations, as well as then what the certified incremental TIFs are. So the effect of that process is really meant to neutralize effects um in the captured value that would be otherwise grossed, that real growth otherwise needs to be released to the base, et cetera, okay? So we made many changes, uh and adjustments, recommended many for various different properties that had, were in the TIF that were demolished and or no new constructions that were impacting the, the growth. Uh the other, uh other item that is noteworthy is, in our reconciliation, there were five material commercial properties that, many of which you would know by name, uh that were actually not in the county's sys, reporting system flag in the appropriate TIF, or in TIF at all for that matter. Uh so we, we went through that, that work. Uh those five properties totaled uh commercial A V of eleven million dollars in addition. So the, it's, it's, it's uh, so that's the, the first updates. We satisfied that compliant uh client's requirement at well, well in prep with the August first deadline. Second is, on a more pleasant note, as a result of that, they released the net assess valuations both to the city and various tax districts, as well as what the redevelopment commission is capturing then by, by TIF district. And shared a table uh with you all uh for the meeting. And the growth is, is uh very favorable for the redevelopment commission. Just looking at executive summary here, cumulative captured assessed values, it's not looking at base. It's just looking at the TIF incremental capture A V is now four hundred and sixty-one million dollars. That's up forty-one point three million year over year, uh which equates to a nine point eight-five percent year-over-year growth change in taxable evaluations. Couple noteworthy things, there's about twelve million dollars of that growth that's really geared back towards dissipated growth. So that was known existing year-over-year subban roll-off growth of that, of that uh forty-one point three million. And I believe the city's net assess valuation year-over-year came in around three, some three percent plus or minus. So uh that's, that's over a three X multiple between the TIF and the city. Many of you, you know, for years, one of the signs of good TIF is whether or not it is growing at a multiple of the city's net assess valuation. Uh the analogy we've used many times is, it's no different than deferring savings for retirement. If you, if, 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 if you're able to invest at a higher rate, long-term than you are short-term, overall, that's uh, that's a prudent investment of, of resources. So we use that as a one measure to see whether or not the, the results are in the right direction. Other, just a program update, many of you, years ago, there was an initiative around, uh at the time around two thousand twelve, the net assess value for the city was around two point two billion dollars, net gross was three billion. And there was an initiative of challenging the redevelopment commission to say, okay, over, over the life of these TIFs, could we, could we reach a growth of one billion dollars? Could we actually, as, as a result of these investments, actually create fifty percent new valuation uh from a taxable standpoint? And through paid twenty-twenty assessments, you're four hundred and sixty-one million of that, of that goal. And at the time we did that initial calculation, the annual growth rate that would have to be maintained cumulatively was plus or minus seven to eight percent annual. And over the last few years, even right around, right around that level. So just another directional sign um of, of the work you all have done. So uh that's, that's all I have uh tonight. I welcome any questions. The other point I would make out is when you look at the historical results, two other things I think are noteworthy. One is Orsfield Road, you'll see new incremental value come online for paid twenty-twenty. This is the first time it has taxable assessed valuation, meaning that in uh next year, there will be increment collected, collected in that TIF, okay? Second noteworthy thing that I think is, is worthy to point out is just the growth of the central expansion TIF in general. If you look at that a few years ago, um didn't even exist. It's now in a few short years, uh taken a bump with the Fry Road TIF is the number two largest, uh largest producing TIF area. So uh and then lastly, E side is continuing to be, I think, works out to be about seventy percent of the total, total valuation. And again, it has a sunset in the late twenty-twenty's. That's, that's all I plan to share. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is anyone here from the mayor's office to respond? We have a claims docket in the amount of one million seven hundred and forty-four thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve? Further discussion? Seeing now on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Will stand adjourned. Thank you, folks.